For sure. Trying to get a hundred M's nigga, I ain't kidding. Homie TV, that's hustlers on a missionary day, we in the lit house. Whatever you do, make sure you keep the light within you shining bright, you feel me? And we back with a real nigga reaction. Late night R and R, you feel me? Go ahead and get your leafs roll up, know what I'm saying? And chill out. Matter of fact, I don't, I don't live it down. I'm feeling lazy. I don't know how long I'm gonna keep this up. But this is a quick one, this gonna be a quick one matter of fact. It's gonna be a quick one. Yeah, man, Friday morning. Oh, I said, it's three twenty on the dot. Eastern time. I mean, it's probably about what, eleven over there on the west coast? What I'm saying, they probably just, what I'm saying, getting the party started over there on the west, in the west coast. Shit, man. So let's get to it, see what the fuck this is. See what the title say, right? I don't even remember what the fuck I, what that shit said, we finna go to it right now. Hold on, which one should I do? This one? This pussy ass cord in this phone doing some bitch ass shit. Talking about motherfucking shit ain't charging. Uh, six oh seven, uh, Alex Stein in racism at the city council? They in the racism at the city council, or at least they attempting to. Hold on, before we get on time from the chain, my bad, I thought we here for no. My back. Uh, my neck, my back, my neck and my back.
Number six oh seven UNC.
Everybody, I'm, um, I'm locked in a firm and I'm stuck in assimilation.
Name and address.
Oh, yeah, my name, um.
Y'all got to know who this nigga is right now, right? This nigga crazy, man. It's the risk.
I'm from the Paroma, that's like in the heavens, it's like the same as heaven, but it's different. And I come to talk about Trump because I love Trump and y'all respect the Trump and y'all don't know that y'all devils and y'all come from, um, the devils, y'all fell from heaven.
He's told them people they're devils in their face. That shit funny, man, I just seen the clip of this shit, man, this shit retarded, what the fuck? This nigga say he locked in a firm, hold on, man, let's go back, look at this nigga whole intro.
Number six oh seven UNC.
I knew he was finna be on some shit, when I seen him walking in this motherfucking building like, uh, slow looking crazy, how you look, look how you slow down right here. Take that last step, if you look up, what the fuck is that shit in his hand?
Everybody, I'm, um, I'm locked in a firm and I'm stuck in assimilation.
Name and address.
He walked out, that's the first thing he said, I'm locked in a firm and I'm stuck in assimilation.
Oh, yeah, my name.
That's a good start, that's a good start.
I'm from the Paroma, that's like in the heavens, it's like the same as heaven, but it's different. And I come to talk about.
He ain't even answer them people crazy, ask what his name was, where he from or some shit, then he say that. And they say he from Paroma.
Oh, yeah, my name, um, right, I'm, um, I'm locked in a firm and I'm stuck in assimilation.
Name and address.
Oh, yeah, my name, um, I'm from the Paroma, that's like in the heavens, it's like the same as heaven, but it's different. And I come to talk about Trump because I love Trump and y'all respect the Trump and y'all don't know that y'all devils and y'all come from, um, the devils, y'all fell from.
That man took his glasses off like, man, what the fuck, this nigga just say?
Y'all respect the Trump and y'all don't know that y'all devils and y'all come from, um, the devils, y'all fell from heaven. Trump is good, he black stuck in another body, cause the world assimilation and everything is reincarnated, oh sorry, everything is reincarnated. And I got some papers I need y'all to sign because I'm trying to let everybody know that Michelle Obama is a man, her, her name is Michael and don't nobody know. But this right here, if y'all can help me sign this, we can kinda like get a gender reveal.
Man, this nigga crazy, man, this, what the hell kind of shit is this? What is this shit, he can't be in front of no real goddamn, uh, council people with this bullshit, I know this nigga had to get on the internet, I know he had to get on the internet and say that bullshit about Obama wife, I know he did just say that shit, he just said that shit.
And I came to talk.
I guess that's his lane, that's his lane talking crazy about shit like. I'm that one nigga. What's up?
I love Trump and y'all respect the Trump and y'all don't know that y'all devils and y'all come from, um, the devils, y'all fell from heaven. And y'all know that Trump is good, he black stuck in another body, cause the world is simulation.
That's funny, but can you straight tell the white people they come from the devils? Man, what the fuck? You told them crack to their faith, y'all know where the fuck y'all come from, right?
And everything is reincarnated, oh sorry, everything is reincarnated. And I got some papers I need y'all to sign because I'm trying to let everybody know that Michelle Obama is a man, her, her name is Michael.
Whoever put this picture up of Michelle Obama, y'all dead ass wrong, I just want y'all to know that, I just, I, I have felt like I had to make that statement on. Whoever put this picture up, y'all dead ass wrong. Y'all dead ass wrong for making me say the shit that I wanna say about this motherfucking picture about Michelle Obama. Y'all dead ass wrong for putting this picture up there and making me have these thoughts to say this shit about this lady, man, that's a nice lady, bro. Uh, how dare y'all motherfuckers, bro, how dare y'all? The audacity of y'all to put this picture up of Michelle Obama and have me fight these urges to say this shit on my mind. About this damn picture.
And don't nobody know, but this right here, if y'all can help me sign this, we can kinda like get a gender reveal. Because she's a man, I mean, he's a man, it's kinda like he she, uh, but it's different. But I need to get out the firm and I need to get to Antarctica, so I need you guys to get to Antarctica, right? Because y'all blocking Antarctica and you doing it for sure because you know you fell from the heavens and I can look at you and tell that you, uh, Nathaniel, Nathaniel, you, 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 you say, you devil. Leave Trump alone and Hillary Clinton stupid and Bill Clinton did inhale that weed, he said he didn't, but he did. I know he did, leave smoke weed and don't inhale. And that's all, thank you guys for having me, I love you guys. America, um, make America great again, put up the wall and.
I love you, you.
This nigga, come on, this nigga's a red character. Pick your cup up, go back and get your cup.
Our next speaker is Mr. Alex Stein.
And get your cup. You left your cup nigga.
What's up, uh, what's going on guys? Sorry, I'm, right now I'm debating some part about, get your cup. What? Alright, so, hey mayor, uh, thank you guys for having me, uh, everything's going good in Capel, um, name and address. My name's Alex Stein, uh, seventy five oh nine Inwood Road, what you just saw though, is the first black man I believe to ever come to this council and ask for what he asked for, and I looked at your face and some of you guys, I didn't know if I was at a city council meeting or a Klan rally. I mean, some of the way y'all looked at that African American, y'all looked at him as less sad, and I don't think that's cool. I don't look at that man as less sad, I look at him better than me, and that's why I feel like we should treat, you know, people that are underprivileged like him. You see him, he's an ex convict, he accidentally murdered somebody, vehicular manslaughter, and a lot of people they wanna say, oh, he murdered somebody, he's a bad person, not me. I think we should look at a murderer and give them the same respect, you know, if they paid their dues, they paid their, you know, social justice, their, their crime to society, then they should be a free man. And I'll be honest, like, Ank is, he has some serious issues, I caught him looking at some websites, not illegal websites, just weird websites of, of drawings of My Little Pony in a sexual manner, and I did not think that was okay, and so I reported him to the police for that, and we're having issues with, with the police and law enforcement in Capel not arresting him for that, because that My Little Pony brony stuff is not good. So with all that being said, right now, we're in Capel. In the greatest city in America, you saw Capel got rated the best city in America, did you see this mayor? Yes, you did, for the people playing at home, Capel did get rated the best city, why? Because it's mainly white people that aren't gonna rob you and aren't gonna kill you, and is that, you know, is that a real?
I thought that was, uh, maybe I'm wrong, I don't know, maybe, maybe that is their city.
Statement, I don't know, I'll let you be the judge of that, but we look at our crime stats, you look at our demographics of the city, and I'll tell you what, it's safe as hell. So I'm happy that Capel is a city where I don't have to worry about a Venezuelan, Trinidad, Roga gangbanger coming over here and trying to manipulate me or do something to my girlfriend or do something to my ex-wife Deborah, I don't have to worry about that at all, because Capel is a safe city. And the only criticism I have is you guys could have treated Ank with little more respect, he is a black guru, his son was murdered and I believe was sacrificed to the Illuminati. So he's a very powerful guy, he's connected to the rapper Nelly, I'm sure, and, um, he, he does not like Kanye West, so don't worry, we're not gonna get in trouble with that, no. No swastika situation with Ank, he's, uh, very pro Israel, I think he's Jewish actually, he's a black Hebrew Israeli. So with all that being said, I just wanna say that Donald Trump is the greatest president, and you know who's the greatest mayor? You, Mayor West, you're one of the nicest guys, you're bedside manner, and listen, you got a ragtag bunch, you gotta deal with all these councilmen, I know Mike, the city manager, is always giving you hell and you're sending these emails, you're like, Mike, I'm the mayor. And he's like, I'm the city manager, you're the real boss, and you make this city great, and that's why the cowgirls and the cowboys of Capel are such great, fine, young people. God bless this city and God bless you and God bless Donald Trump, thank you.
How'd you feel about the city council meeting?
Um, it's good, they gonna unlock the firm. Yeah, uh, listen, midget dancing is good, midget point.
They don't even, they ain't even got no control over that shit, man, you know that. That man a goddamn fool putting on like that. Hey, man, that's what that shit be about, man, shit. Who knows, I might start acting a damn fool like this motherfucker, I know I got a whole bunch of shit be in my head, I be thinking about saying, I just don't say it. I know about a lot of shit, right? I also don't give a fuck about a lot of shit. I'm almost at that point though, once I hit that point. Damn joint no stopping. Niggas be talking about characters, one thing about it, I got a couple characters, ain't nobody got nothing on my characters. If I activate them bitches, if I activate them bitches. I don't need to activate that shit, boy, that power surge fucked me up a little bit though, I ain't no cop, that shit fucked me up. And knocked me out of track, that nigga done, that nigga, look at that boy, that boy ugly as. That been hurt, that been ugly. Hey, man, that boy getting mad, check out this shit. Man, get you a check out this bit, create a motherfucker character, get your ass out them streets, man, you ain't gotta do that bullshit, you feel me? Just stick to the formula, you know what I'm saying, build and stay consistent, and then you'll be straight. I brace her silence. Did she break her silence? I don't know, we finna see.
I started my business as a virtual assistant three years ago, and one of the reasons I was able to stay so organized was by using HoneyBook. HoneyBook has handled all of my proposals.
How about we go to court about Halo? You know, me and you got Halo, and like, you know, I don't, I don't care what happens in life, but like, I don't ever wanna see you ever disrespect me in public again. Give me my [bleep] son back.
Shout out to D Green with this man, eh.
Holly Bailey just accused her baby daddy, D D G, of doing the unthinkable. Holly claims that D D G abused and attacked her multiple times. And she gets a restraining order.
No!
Why the Megan Thee Stallion is this? Do y'all really think D D G put his hands on Holly Bailey? D D G already dated the biggest pass around in the industry. John Stockton.
Like, uh, jumping over gates and shit like that. So boom, so we was at D D G crib, we just in the living room playing the video game, out of nowhere, bro. RR stopped in, don't say a word, at this time, they wasn't cool, they wasn't speaking terms, so like, she had came unannounced, she don't say nothing, she go straight upstairs, D D G look at us like, we like, so we continue playing the game, nigga? She come downstairs, she come downstairs with some flight itineraries, flight tickets, just for context, I guess D D G had flew some, you know, little, yeah, or whatever, some little shit out and put the thing in the trash, so she could dig through his trash and found it. So she come downstairs, the mad, D D G not really paying attention, he playing a game, when I say, bro, she grabbed this nigga big ass chain, bro. And threw that bitch across the living room, I looked at D D G eyes, bro, that nigga pupils was dilated, bro, that nigga was, saw nothing but red, when I say, bro, I'ma leave it at that, I felt it, I felt the yank, I'm like, ooh. Mind you, she did this in front of his niggas, he stand up, ain't no telling what he was finna do, I know, I know D D G, that's not him, that's not his body, he was never, whenever there, like, you know, anything like that, that look in his eyes though, it was a strong consideration.
And if D D G didn't smack this. What makes you think he would put hands on a Disney princess? But Holly really filed a police report, and this is all magically going public. After Holly gets accused of cheating with Brent Faiyaz. Now I've been saying this multiple times, bro, Holly is not as innocent as the internet may make it seem.
I seem nice online and innocent and everything, but you guys do not know, I will go to battle.
She claims things first got physical in January, but they broke up back in October. She says that D D G came over to pick up their son Halo, and she tried to start a conversation about a visitation schedule. As she was buckling Halo in the car seat, she claims that D D G grew agitated and repeatedly said, get out my car, bitch. Oh, hell no, I don't even believe this, bro, this scripted ass statement, bro, this reminds me of what Megan Thee Stallion said about Tory Lanez. Dance bitch.
He said dance [bleep] and he start shooting.
And now Holly is saying, D D G said, get out my car, bitch, she's really trying to end this man's whole career. Holly says that the baby was crying and she got nervous about D D G leaving with him in such an agitated state. And then she reveals these bruises on her arm. Now nine times out of ten, Holly was swinging on D D G first. And as you can see, this isn't a Rihanna and Chris Brown situation, D D G wasn't just beating on her like a nigga. Holly was most likely throwing haymakers and D D G probably just grabbed her and was trying to defend himself.
Diddy used to tell me, nigga, she, she used to smack the shit out of him on the baby, he chillin', she smacking the shit out him.
She said that's when they allegedly started wrestling with D D G pulling her hair.
Huh?
Slamming her face on his steering wheel. And chipping her tooth?
No!
Oh my gosh, this has Beyonce and Jay-Z written all over it, they're really trying to wish this devil magic on D D G, bro, I'm asleep.
This is Beyonce physical form, nigga Beyonce is an S rank demon, my nigga, seriously.
And supposedly Holly been had this chip tooth like three years ago.
Huh?
You.
I said some shit, didn't I, didn't I say that? Who, 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 who I said that to, who, who I, wasn't I just saying that shit? I said, man, this bitch probably been had this shit too, look at that shit, look at the date on that shit. Uh, look at it. Three years ago, October. Two and a half years ago. Twenty twenty two. She ain't leave, she was, she ain't start fucking with the man, so, so she said she, her tooth got chipped. And the altercage, goddamn, another one, ano, some more proof, more proof that these bitches just be capping. More proof that bitches just be capping, just look at it, look, right there, broke down, damn.
Fool me, you little mermaid.
I've always been a little scared of the dentist, but I'm going for my regular cleaning.
Wait, oh my god, you, y'all some dirty motherfuckers, boy, I can't, man. I'm just sad for the world because it's no, it would never be a such thing as real love out this bitch again, bro. It would never be. It could never be, bro, love, damn, I'm, I'm agreeing with Dog, the dog said it, man, ain't no such thing as love right here, bro. It is no such thing as love. And when you truly understand a female, to truly understand a female altogether is to never fall in love again, never ally yourself. But once you understand that ain't no such thing as love, bro, you'll be straight, you won't even have to worry about that. Like. Damn, that's crazy. You know how many niggas going through shit like this? Eh, I'mma, I'mma put, I'mma get, I'mma tell you another thing too. I ain't doubting that that's it yet, he, I know I ain't doubting that, he ain't doubting that that's it yet, we probably all know that that's it yet. But given the situation and the circumstances and new developing information. Bro. It, it wasn't even two years, bro, like. I'mma tell you, bro, that shit. It wasn't even two years for Shawty goddamn pull the move like that, yeah, even two years old, yeah, really? You need to get that DNA, my boy. Hey, I don't know, you know what I'm saying, might not, even if you, even if it ain't, you need to get that DNA, it might be a load off, it might be a new life for you, my boy. You might need to get that DNA. You might have to get that, boy, that's crazy.
Also because I chipped my tooth and I'm just a little nervous.
Holly says that she was in pain and crying, and although that stopped the fighting, she was still worried about Halo. So she remained in the car for the ride over to D D G's house, where she told his family what happened. I'mma tell you straight up, bro, I don't believe it, that nigga D D G was a valedictorian, that nigga is not stupid.
You see this red flag, you're like, yeah, no, it's checkout time, I can't do that, something that you've learned over the time.
A girl that puts her, put her hands on you, can't do that, can't do that, no, no, no.
Damn, that was a serious red flag right now.
Holly was accused of fucking Brent Faiyaz while she had Halo on vacation, and the next day, this is coming out, I'm not buying it, bro, I'm sorry, I'm not buying it. And after Holly told D D G's family what happened, they said they take care of Halo. She was left hysterical and with bruises on her arm to go along with her chipped tooth. And I'm guessing these images is what allowed her to get the restraining order.
Never have I ever started drama with my boyfriend for no reason. Put it down.
And she also alleges that D D G creeped her out in March, when he showed up at her home, entered without permission and went to her bedroom and texted a pic of Holly's empty bed, along with the text, now I know what you been on, lol. Now Holly says she interpreted the text as D D G accusing her of having sex with other people. Now I'm not gonna lie, it sounds like D D G would do something petty like that, but, but I don't think he's giving Holly Bailey Fight Night animations, bro.
Nigga is too smart for that.
Bro, it's insane that just last year, everything was good, bro, they had a nice, healthy family, and now this? And four days later, she claimed that he really exploded.
Huh?
When he came back to her house, Holly told him she and the baby were sick, and she didn't want Halo to leave home. And she claims that when he got verbally abusive, smashed her ring camera and ran away with Holly's phone, Holly claims that D D G threw the phone out his window and yelled to her, go get it bitch. D D G doesn't even talk like that. The incident prompted Holly to go file a police report, and she says she also has ring footage to back up her side of the story. Well, where is the footage, Holly? It was also around this time that D D G claimed on Twitter, he's been fighting to see his son Halo for months. But the final straw from Holly came just last weekend, when she says she was vacationing with Halo and her sister in St. Lucia. Oh, look at these fake ass screenshots, bro. Supposedly D D G said this foul, bet, you think you hurting my feelings? When you really just ruining your own image, this a terrible look, makes you look disgusting and evil, enjoy your vacation. Just have the same energy when it's my turn to have him, I'm on the same shit. These doctor ass screenshots, bro, I'mma keep it a bean, I don't believe none of this shit. She says, Darryl, are you not tired of harassing me? You make up a new lie on me every day? Now first off, D D G is not the one that made up this story. I'm in St. Lucia having fun with Shermae and Chloe, not with any man out here, I wouldn't do that, I have Halo.
Okay.
I told your mom I was gonna be with my sister last week, please let me enjoy my Mother's Day in peace, I hope you are okay and feel better soon. The judge granted Holly a domestic violence restraining order, requiring D D G to stay one hundred yards away and gave her permission to take Halo to Italy, where she'll be filming a movie for two months, so damn. On top of the restraining order, D D G can't see his son for at least two more months.
No!
Bro, this is so fucked up, bro, and not even just for D D G, but his son, bro. Luckily, he's young enough to not even really understand what's going on, and D D G also has to stop posting or streaming about her and their child?
Huh?
So you're telling me that D D G can't even speak about his own kid on the internet? So you're telling me that D D G can't even speak about his own kid on the internet? Nah, bro. I guarantee you that Beyonce and Jay-Z are behind all this shit, bro. What the fuck is this? Now, D D G might not be able to talk about this situation, but his friends and family definitely are gonna talk about this situation.
What the fuck was that?
Are you? What the fuck is this?
That's not even Beyonce no more, man. That's a, that's a whole white bitch.
Now, D D G might not be able to talk about this situation, but his friends and family definitely are gonna talk about this situation.
Y'all remember when we group screenshot of D D G, uh, D N R this and that? They're like. He don't, he don't just do that just to do it. You know what I'm saying? Some shit happened for him to do it. You get what I'm saying? And why would he do it?
Imagine swinging on somebody and you miss and you hurt yourself trying to swing on somebody.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Y'all take it easy.
And what the hell is Soulja Boy talking about? You a bitch ass nigga for putting your hands on Holly, little nigga. If I catch you, I'm beating the fuck out of you. Nah, Soulja Boy has to be one of the biggest crashouts of this generation, bro.
Man, Soulja Boy just want attention. Soulja Boy know how to use the internet. And that's all he doing, cuz he don't. Soulja Boy know how to use that shit to his advantage. He gonna do that shit, throw his name in the mix. So it generate his name through the search engines and the algorithm. And then he ultimately make some money off of YouTube and the internet and all the other bullshit from people looking at his shit. That's it. He don't give no fuck.
Man, D D G can't whoop me out. That nigga in his face, nigga.
What is Soulja-
And that's what bitch ass niggas say. Of course, that's what you would have to do to a nigga that go whoop your ass, nigga, cuz you can't fight, nigga. You ain't shit. You gonna need a motherfucking gun, bitch. That's how you shoot, bitch ass nigga. You shoot with your hand in the, uh, nigga, like a dancer. Fuck outta here, man.
Boy talking about? And when did he start beefing with D D G? Now Holly claims that this happened literally last week, last Wednesday. Did anyone else hear or see what happened on this day? She says yes. Halo?
Huh?
Are you serious? So what are you gonna get Halo to make a statement? What the fuck is she talking about? This nigga's a baby. Halo does not count as a witness. Okay, bro. Now we obviously see what's going on now, bro. Did the person in the weapon use a weapon? She says no. Did the person cause you any emotional or physical harm? She says yes. Did the police come? Yes. How often has the person abused you like this? She says two to five times.
Okay.
Nah, bro. Holly is signed to Beyonce and that's all I really need to know that this is all bullshit, bro. We all know Beyonce and Jay-Z was doing the same shit that Diddy was doing. They just haven't got caught yet. So I really don't believe none of this shit they're talking about, bro. Holly is not as sweet as that Disney movie may make it seem.
Y'all are stupid.
Lying on me every day? Now first off, D D G is not the one that made up this story. I'm in St. Lucia having fun with Shermay and Chloe, not with any man out here. I wouldn't do that. I have Halo.
Okay.
I told your mom I was gonna be with my sister last week. Please let me enjoy my Mother's Day in peace. I hope you are okay and feel better soon. The judge granted Holly a domestic violence restraining order requiring D D G to stay one hundred yards away and gave her permission to take Halo to Italy where she'll be filming a movie for two months. So damn, on top of the restraining order, D D G can't see his son for at least two more months.
No!
Bro, this is so fucked up, bro. And not even just for D D G, but his son, bro. Luckily, he's young enough to not even really understand what's going on. And D D G also has to stop posting or streaming about her and their child? So you're telling me that-
And all his reality, no he don't because it's his life, so he don't have to do none of that shit. It's still part of his life. You don't gotta stop doing a damn thing. Get your lawyers together, man. You just need to get your team of lawyers together. It ain't gonna mount the ass because it's Jay-Z shit, but. You doing right. You staying low. You trying to build up and you gonna get your money up. That's all you need to do. Get your motherfucking money up, nigga. Take this time and realize this is about getting your motherfucking paper up. Get your shit up, nigga, like Nick Cannon status. Nigga, you need to be host, you need to be goddamn it doing it. You need to have your own motherfucking streaming university and shit.
D D G can't even speak about his own kid on the internet?
Need to goddamn get their money.
I guarantee you that Beyonce and Jay-Z are behind all this shit, bro. What the fuck is this? Now, D D G might not be able to talk about this situation, but his friends and family definitely are gonna talk about this situation.
Y'all remember when we group screenshot of D D G, uh, D N R this and that?
We gonna talk about this shit for you. That, she gonna penalize, she gonna penalize you.
Shit, we just mad. Do it. You know what I'm saying? Some shit happened.
Yeah, we gonna get it off, my boy. We gonna get that shit off.
You get what I'm saying?
We definitely gonna get it off. They got a nigga fucked up.
Why would he do it?
Imagine swinging on somebody and you miss and you hurt yourself trying to swing on somebody.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Y'all take it easy.
And what the hell is Soulja Boy talking about? You a bitch ass nigga for putting your hands on Holly, little nigga. If I catch you, I'm beating the fuck out of you. Nah, Soulja Boy has to be one of the biggest crashouts of this generation, bro.
Man, D D G can't whoop me out. That nigga in his face, nigga.
What is Soulja Boy talking about? And when did he start beefing with D D G? Now Holly claims that this happened literally last week, last Wednesday. Did anyone else hear or see what happened on this day? She says yes. Halo?
Huh?
Are you serious? So what are you gonna get Halo to make a statement? What the fuck is she talking about? This nigga's a baby. Halo does not count as a witness. Okay, bro. Now we obviously see what's going on now, bro. Did the person in the weapon use a weapon? She says no. Did the person cause you any emotional or physical harm? She says yes. Did the police come? Yes. How often has the person abused you like this? She says two to five times.
Okay.
Nah, bro. Holly is signed to Beyonce and that's all I really need to know that this is all bullshit, bro. We all know Beyonce and Jay-Z was doing the same shit that Diddy was doing. They just haven't got caught yet. So I really don't believe none of this shit they're talking about, bro. Holly is not as sweet as that Disney movie may make it seem.
Y'all are stupid.
Rest of us can try to send you way back to shit. She already had a damn chipped tooth.
Don't take my son, 'cause he all I got. I'm just having fun. I don't love these thoughts.
That is not all you got, my boy. You got more than that. These niggas just start feeling like that because they be a new father and shit. You feel me? That ain't all you got though, my boy. You got the potential to make more, nigga. You definitely got the potential to make more, nigga. Fuck you worried about that phone, nigga. Fuck all that. Alright, what's next? I ain't really shitting this, man. We're going back for the almost four. Almost four, man. That shit crazy though. She talking about her chipped tooth. And it was chipped at least three years ago.
He Charleston right now.
Some people do because he goes against a lot of the, you know.
At least that, uh, one of those.
At least three years ago.
He is. He's gonna beat that. And he's gonna beat your ass too. He's gonna beat.
I got a hundred thousand. Listen, I got a hundred thousand. Me versus Charleston White. We can do it here live. I got a hundred thousand. If we're gonna ring in here, we do it live. Hundred thousand.
Charleston White is playing a dirty game with six oh seven up. He's going to the internet and he's calling for self-defense and he's saying that he's in fear for his life and he's petrified and it's to another level. So when he does run into six oh seven up, he could do what he want with him because it's documented publicly on the internet that six oh seven up made threats to him and he feared for his life. Now Texas, the laws are different than they are like in California and other states. There's a stand your ground law. So if you from Texas, make sure y'all get in the comments and break it down for us so we can really understand the whole Texas law, Texas gun law, stand your ground law, all that type of stuff. So all the lawyers, man, y'all get up in the comments, but I ain't gonna take too much of y'all time. Let me know what y'all think. If Charleston White is playing a cold game and we gonna figure it out, man.
What he talking about you?
Right. I, I wanna- Charleston White. Don't lie, people don't know. He, he constipated. He gotta lie, shut up, dawg. I need to knock it out. Damn. Cuz, cuz I'm, I'm afraid for my life. This man, uh, he done made shit. Uh, he has connections and ties to the Illuminati where people come up missing and, 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 and. And so, yeah, I'm on, we, we, me and him cannot be nowhere near each other. It's got to- I mean it. No, no, that, uh, yeah, and they don't even, I don't even know that, homie. And, and for that, uh, y'all ain't know that, but he ain't gonna walk around for work in Dallas and think, we ain't, nah, I'm on them for real.
You see the video of him snitching on the stand?
What the, a snitch gonna snitch, eh? You can't be surprised when a snitch snitch. I'm trying to catch Charleston White. Stop playing on me. I'm trying to catch him. I'm trying to catch him. I wanna catch him. Yeah, yeah, I would.
Shit, I'd be scared of that nigga so much. Wow, that nigga crazy. I'd be scared. I'd be, yeah, I'd be afraid for my life. I'd be doing the same thing. I'm gonna set up the play, yo. I'm afraid for my life. He ain't wrong for setting up the play if the nigga tripping like that, even though we know these niggas characters and they be putting on that shit for the internet. That shit funny.
Was a little boy didn't accept apologies. When the, when the grandmama tried to make, I didn't accept apology. I took a ass whipping. I don't want no apology. I'm a grudge holder. Homie, you can't, uh, listen, anybody, I, I done fell out with KD the jeweler behind it. When I seen KD the jeweler up there letting him sit at his jewelry shop cuz, cuz me and KD been knowing each other over almost thirty years. Let me see, my son twenty, twenty-one. Me and KD been knowing each other twenty-one, twenty-one years. My son was six months old when we met. He talked to my, I mean, I, I done met his daddy. He talked, my mama sent him a message. Ain't nowhere in the world a nigga go say he wanna fuck my partner and me and this nigga go do, I'm on, I, we ain't got no business like that. So, yeah, it's, and, yeah, seen with Hustle Cartel, uh, nah, fell out with everybody. Uh, cuz, cuz I don't know them, I ain't never met them before. I ain't never seen them. I ain't, I ain't never engaged them in person. Uh, yeah, them some different kinda word. And they some lying, uh, I hate a lying hoe. And them nigga whole tendency. Uh, and they talk to my strata defense with the punk. Uh, yeah, 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 nah, nah. I ain't that kind of uncle. I ain't put no fingernail polish on my nails and I ain't my son to sing in no studio with some more. And, and they was singing whatever that, uh, down, down. Bro, I ain't my son to make that kinda song. You remember that song when Nelly down, down?
Ah, that's why I hear the sound. Boy, that nigga Charleston White cold, boy. That nigga talk shit like.
Yeah, I ain't my son, sacrificing my son to be a pop star rapper.
What's gonna happen when you catch him?
Not a damn thing.
Oh, 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 oh. I'ma, but, but, but not with it. I ain't, I'ma come out his mouth. I'ma use peanut butter. You, you about the peanut butter?
Do you know how it's-
I don't know because this guy spazzed out on fentanyl or whatever. What is, how did the beef happen?
So I'm like, oh, see, listen, that's it. He used to be a black panther. Then they paid him money. He said, right, that's how I'm, he switched up for the money. I go, I'm soaking. And he say he get ten thousand dollars on say keys.
Wait, wait, wait. Wait, timeout. How did he switch up?
He ain't pay him shit. He pay Charleston White shit. Nobody pay Charleston White shit.
I had paid Charleston. I had paid Charleston White.
Three hundred? You ain't pay him ten thousand? Say you paid him ten thousand.
I paid him thirty-five hundred bucks.
He, well, I say he get ten thousand. He lying.
I saw his thing. He got paid ten thousand.
He lying. How much you pay him again?
I, I paid him forty-five. But he's a friend of mine.
How much you pay him?
Thirty-five.
He say he get ten. That's a goddamn laugh.
That's to travel. Hey, oh, cuz you're too stupid because you got to go to school. You didn't graduate fifth grade. Hey, when he has to go to this place, he has to travel. He gets paid more to, to drive ten minutes to come on my show.
He still crackhead.
And he's been on my show for free, but I'm saying I have paid him before cuz he helped me out on stuff.
Make ten thousand dollars. He don't make ten thousand dollars. He don't even gotta fuck YouTube.
Yeah, but why are you pocket watching Charleston White?
Because he run around, act like he teach the knowledge. The knowledge don't work. Now, now it's gonna be stupid.
He teaches any knowledge. What do you do?
He learn like everybody did. Just stop playing on me.
He talks about people, but he didn't sell anything. He didn't, I know dude because you're gay, dude. You're a black gay man. You're like, you're gonna get. You're not, you're the one that's saying you wanna have some Charleston White.
I never said that.
You just said you would have sticked your ass in his mouth is your exact quote.
Girl and boy is the same, but it's different. One of them got two hoes.
Eddie, is that true?
I think it's more like not, but more like hey.
I, I, I say, I, I say, no.
You're a natural. Eddie, you're a genius. You're-
I really think this is the reason why Charleston White says he's gonna call for self-defense. And he pulled out all those weapons on the video at the end is because I, listen.
Sit y'all down.
Uh. I'll pay a, I'll pay a to get him. That's how serious I am. If I can't get him, I'll pay a to get him. That's how serious I am. But I, yeah, 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 yeah. Nah, nah, you can't scare me. He done scared me. And he look like the type of that a fucker boy. Talk like he will, or he got the mannerism. So I'm terrified of that guy.
So is it safe to say right now? Cuz I, I've been around you a lot with that bag. Is-
No, Charleston White says he cut off a lot of people that he knew for twenty years due to the fact that they messing with his ops. When we say ops, we talking about Hustle Cartel, Lil Woody, even fell out with his managers and them about Lil Woody. Now, he, and if, I ain't gonna lie, it seemed to me like he ain't really dealing with say Cheese TV cuz he bought GoYayo on there or something. I don't know, man. Maybe it's just my head just thinking the stuff, but I don't know. Y'all let me know y'all thoughts and opinions down below in the comment section, man.
Yo, them brains out too. I got all these, I tell you, you making all even threats. I got another little gun I can use. Long range twenty-two. Long range twenty-two bullet. I tell you, I'm gonna be at Dallas Show Club tonight. On Tuesdays, they have little certain events. Come see me since you looking for me. I'm back in the city. We shoot guns or we can blow flames like a dragon or we can fight, we can whatever you wanna do. I'm with the, yeah, yeah, yeah. Now I know you told Terrence Gangster Williams you wanna apologize. You called Terrence Gangster Williams? I don't want no apology. Keep playing how you playing. Keep the same energy. I don't want no apology. Me and you cannot see each other and one of us not get hurt. That's loud now. Now in Texas, it's called mutual combatting. This is not a mutual combating situation. You haven't asked me to a fight. You threatening to fuck me. So I'm in fear of my life and my safety. I'm gonna hurt you under the standing ground law. This is not a threat that I'm making to you. This is a response to a sexual threat you made upon my life and you have made more than two videos stating this out of your mouth. It's dangerous now. You ain't safe around this with me and you together. It's on and I got a bunch of these. You playing on the internet, talking about putting on me.
I got a bunch of these.
I'm petrified. At first I was terrified. I went from being terrified to horrified. More I think about it, I'm petrified. I'm, I got gas in this now. I got gas in this now. Talking about you looking for me. You lying. Yeah, you lying. Somebody get that boy. I'm in the city. Yeah, 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 nah, I'm in the city. Yeah, nah, I'm in the city. Tupac told you. Tupac told you. I got.
You can't do that though, Charleston. Charleston, you could do that and you could say that you scared, bro.
But you not, you not taking the, you take a precaution far as your weapons and shit, but. You got, you got to at least seem scared, my boy. You gotta be scared. You can't just think it all the time.
I got, I got none. I got, nigga, I got a mace gun. Bitch, you mace. Oh, man, you a doctor with me playing and you done scared me. You done scared me. Now I normally play and you done scared me. You done made multiple videos and went before the world threatening to fuck me.
Now he really, now he acting scared. Okay, there you go.
I'm gonna kill you. And I got bomb money and lawyer money for like you. You ain't got no money, bitch. Them small ass platform you sitting down on can't afford my price. That's why they can't get me. It gets like you, you a, you a Walmart brand of a. See, they book you fifteen hundred, two thousand, I'm a ten thousand dollar book. Can't no just get me. You ain't having no motion and ain't having no money. You ain't got one video with, with a million. Nowhere. You're twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand views. I'm a million view. You ain't got one platform you done been on that done got a million views and you talking about you looking for me. Boy, you go, boy, man, I mean, I can't wait to see you. I can't wait to see your.
Hey, you, yeah, you, before we get any further in this.
I want, you got to, yeah, you got to deliver. Yeah, yeah, you got to deliver. Uncle Punk, you ain't having no money. You ain't having no motion. They go, yeah, yo, little boy, he just talking. You a crash out dummy. You playing shock jock. You ain't go hurt nobody. You don't even wanna get caught with the pistol. How you think more three come up dead? Don't wanna get caught with the pistol? You scared to go back to jail. You just talking. Yeah, yeah, you just talking. Uh, what's your name? Uh, Real Papa's, we ignoring you. You ain't even got a platform. Let me argue with the other internet. And keep your ass in the comment section. Stay out of grown folk business. Stay out of grown folk business. Uh, what's your name? Real Opus. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Pay attention in class. You probably in school type. Yeah, you don't know no better. Yeah, you don't know no better. You stay your mother in that school type, man. But yeah, Uncle Punk. Hey, watch your mouth. See, uh, uh, my people, men suck my dick. Let me block it. Can't tell me to watch my mouth and you watching me. You can't make that type of shit. Watching me, I go tell me to watch my mouth and you look a ho. Man, you ain't got no power. You'll stop the bullshit. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, nah, I think I'm gonna hurt that when I see you. I'm gonna really hurt you. And I just wanted to put this money in your face. I just wanted to wake up and put this money in your faces. Cause you ain't having no motion and you ain't have, this a lot of money. This a lot of money, more than the average person make in, in a year's time. They say it's a recession. The, uh, uh, interest rates is up. They say people are struggling to buy eggs. Uh, the rent is going up and they saying you ain't having money like the content creators. The people with jobs, the nigga selling dope, the rapper. Nobody is having money like us content creators. And we having a lot of goddamn money. You ain't having money. I'm a content creator, homie. I'm on every social media platform. You think I ain't getting rich? I'm, I'm, I'm having condos and I'm getting houses all over the country. Shh, nigga, please. Get rich in the mafia. So I understand niggas got to say my name. They wanna say my name. They want the attention, but you ain't gonna make threats upon me. And keep making them consistently because now they're starting to become documented threats. Don't know electrician. You can't show me one electrician and touch millions. If I Google an electrician, it ain't gonna say millions. If you Google my name, it's gonna say network five million. It ain't one electrician name you can throw out there. We can Google right now and it's go holler million dollar network. Man, stop talking. Electrician ain't flying nowhere, doing nothing. You got to work. You ain't buying them. You a broke ass. Electrician ain't having no money. You a blue collar worker. You ain't having money like this, a nigga, where you keep it in your pocket and not put it in the bank. Stop the cap. I ain't on her capping. I'm on her putting it in your, I ain't on her capping. I'm putting it in your face. Yeah, yeah, nah, please. Putting it in your face, boy. She ain't touching money like this, no electrician, nigga. Google electrician and Google my name and see what it say. And then get back with me. Man, stop talking to me. You just talking. Electrician, man, that ain't, that ain't doing nothing to him, nigga. You lying to me? It's a, nigga. He ain't doing it like this. Stop lying. Boy chick, big boy chick, big boy chick, big boy chick. Yeah, yeah, big boy chick. At a packed house. So she called, yeah, dig, no, I don't wanna hear no shit about no, and ain't nobody making more money than content creator. But you tell that boy Uncle Punk, I got weapons for every, I got weapons for everything.
This nigga got a crossbow.
Ain't just got guns. I got everything that you need.
This nigga got a crossbow.
Walking on earth. I can take these weapons in another country and be safe walking on earth. I can go anywhere in the world with all my artillery and my weaponry.
This nigga got a crossbow.
And when I first start getting money, I took over a hundred thousand dollars.
Boy, got a flamethrower, a crossbow.
Took over a hundred thousand dollars and bought all kind of weapons. So I, in my mind, I'm walking around well prepared. Any situation. And then there won't no problem with me. I read all my hand manual practice.
Man, you gotta goddamn.
That's why I walk around this country.
That revolver, nah.
With one eye, no security, and I think I'm bad. Disrespecting the dead, apples, gangs, and I ain't been hit in the mouth yet. You think that's just by chance? Much of I, you think that's just by chance?
Nah, man, that nigga came in that barber shop and got.
Jack me up.
I don't know.
You say you looking for me. I'm in town, pull up on me. I'm in the city. And if I really just wanna get ignorant, cause I know a lot of young, I work with all of them in the city. And they some hungry young, they love to eat, they love to eat, but I don't wanna bring harm to my people. I don't wake up.
Nah, he forgetting about the time a nigga ran up on him in the barber shop and then the nigga goddamn ran up on him on stage. So niggas they got, got to you a couple times, my boy.
Bring harm to my people, but my people ain't gonna harm me. And you been threatening to do something to me. And some, I just seen a video. Did nobody send it to me? So happened to be on TikTok looking for me. And in the process of looking for me, I found you talking about you looking for me. And it alarmed me. Cause I keep seeing these kinda video about you and I'm just sitting back watching. So I did an interview yesterday with Terrence Gangster Williams. And Terrence Gangster Williams told me that you wanna apologize to me. And I told Terrence Gangster, I don't accept apology. When we see each other, I'm gonna attack you. There's no offense or buts about it. I'm not threatening you. I'm telling you. When me and you see each other, if I gotta take this guy's belt off, take the area, take the belt off and put that motherfucking buffer.
You contradict yourself, my brother. You gotta shut the fuck up sometimes. If you gonna goddamn, know what I'm saying? You talking about being scared, then you talking about attacking a man when you see him. It's a difference, my brother. It is a complete difference. Especially depending on where you see a nigga. It might not be Texas, bruh. Unless you plan on not leaving Texas.
Rapping around, hit you across your head. I'm gonna do something, do something, do something. Uh, but I ain't just go see you and not do nothing. I swear to God. What's up, Dan? So hold on.
I ain't gonna just see you and not do it. He gonna, he gonna spray your ass like soldiers, boy. That woulda gonna do.
I fucking me, any looking for me.
He gonna spray the hell out of that nigga. So Charleston White just broke down the whole beef with him and six oh. And they gonna spray that boy with that motherfucking maze. That what he gonna do? He ain't gonna attack that boy. He ain't gonna attack him cause Uncle ain't gonna come in that threatening amount of man. I'm like, man, I'm just putting on, this is my character, man. Are you tripping, man? My character. It's like you play character, man. You a character, nigga. Get with the character game, bitch. Stop taking the shit serious. Get in your character, nigga, get some money, nigga. I'm trying to get some money with you, nigga. That's all. He just trying to get some money with you, man. That's it. Know what I'm saying? You probably inspired a nigga. You feel me? Like, I, yeah, that's why I'm going along with it. That's exactly why he going along with it, huh?
Taking the stallion in the foot. Man, they supposed to be going home to fuck. He know that bitch if wanted to fight, to make her calm better, ghetto bitch. They like to know them ghetto hoe like fighting and then calming like a, for the next fight. Yeah, nah, ain't nothing like that after a good fight. Shit, man, please.
He knew he was gonna get that ass whooped.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, he had to take a ass whooping. Yeah, yeah. They say she whooping the ass too. They say she kicking. He a little bit.
That Meg situation. How much time you feel like Tory gonna get for shooting Meg?
Uh, uh, he should get probation.
Elaborate.
Yeah, he, he, he should get probation. Uh, there, there's, uh, there's no real concrete, there, there's no, there, he wasn't. Uh, he, he, he wasn't convicted without a shadow of a doubt. And those are the rules.
That's right.
Uh, they didn't follow the rules. Uh, he didn't have.
Facts. They did not follow the rules. That's the key fucking point right there. They did not follow the motherfucking rules. What? When the internet started clowning Kai?
And today we're reacting to Kai Sina is losing friends. Man, they are trying to pack up everybody right now, bro. Black, black man from the, everybody getting packed, bro. What they be doing? I don't know, man. Hey, I don't know. But they be trying to pack us for no reason. I don't know. That being said, let's go ahead and get into it, man. Let's do it, man.
At the time of this recording, there's been a recent trend on TikTok regarding Kai Sina and his switch up, his change up in demeanor. And a lot of people are now coming out against him saying, uh, he's fake, that he's been faking his reactions, that he's been doing the most, like saying that he's a Trent Hopper, a bandwagoner. And that he only does what he thinks is popular, that all of this is only business to him and that he's been lying to his fans and that people are now finally starting to see the truth. Now, personally, me, I don't really watch Kai's streams. I'm not really into that type of content. He is a fellow creator, large success. But as I've said in my previous videos, I'm not really into the loudest, funny, the obnoxiously overly stimulated type of content. Where people are jumping around like coked up crackheads on one. Like, I like educational content, fitness content, science, nature type stuff. I know, kinda shocking, basically.
I'mma tell you, short, I already see what that's about. That's about a nigga progressing, you feel me? And I, I could pinpoint exactly when that, when the switch up happened, when he got that watch and he noticed the conversations, the different conversations you got with that watch on. When you got that watch, people have different, you have different conversations and shit, right? It changed, you have a whole different outlook, a whole different perspective on the world and shit, how shit go when you start making that money like that? When you got money like that? Yeah, I think he taking care of people. He more responsible now. He definitely not the same person. Know what I'm saying? He trying to stay that way for a long time. You feel me? May show his people straight forever. You feel me? So fuck that. He should switch up. Keep switching up. Hey, what banks told fifty? And if they hate to let them hate them, watch the money pile up. Switch that shit up, nigga. Fuck, they talking. I already see what else talking about. And I noticed when it started, when, I already noticed when it happened. Yeah, yeah. My boy thinking about life, future shit. He got a girl locked in, know what I'm saying? My boy thinking about family. He finna leave this shit alone. He making that, boy, he put this shit on autopilot. My boy like, man, I'll put this shit on autopilot to make a hundred bands a month, man. Fuck, I give a fuck about this shit for. Got brand deals, all type of shit. Let's say Tory Lanez was hit over there. What the hell is Brick Baby talking about?
Don't underestimate that. That really from where he from. I ain't gonna say nothing on these lines, but that really from where he from. But this the thing, he on the, he on the program yard to where he ain't even, it ain't, it gotta be over a drug date or something because.
She had the gun. She fired it three times. Mr. Peterson grabbed her arm and knocked it down and the gun fired two more times.
Tory Lanez is angling to get released after the stabbing incident yesterday. If what you are about to hear is true, he could find his way out of prison. But what do you think? Did he take the rap for something he didn't do? Or is this an angle? Get in the comments with your thoughts. Before we hear from Brick Baby on this situation, let's hear this clip.
Not long ago, Unite the People was approached by a gentleman named Bradley James. Mr. James informed us he was working as the bodyguard and driver for Ms. Kelsey Harris during Mr. Peterson's trial. As such, he was in close proximity and he had privy to conversations she was having with her husband and others. Mr. Peterson, I'm sorry, Mr. James informed us he was not under a non-confer disclosure agreement or confidentiality agreement and was freed. I heard the gun.
Aw, man, just tapping in, tapping in, seeing what's up with my brother. I just got cussed out for Remo for being less of a friend. He wasn't on purpose though.
Yeah, I had to get on, bro. I'm like, man, he ain't called me in a minute. Bro, bro, he's in jail. He busy, nigga.
He said busy.
Aw, that's crazy, bro. I got Ross, try to Ross here. Oh, Flaco here, Bro Rogan here.
Hey, we trying to line up, we, we lining up the interview with, uh, Ross, Remo and, and Brickman. We trying to make that happen.
Yeah, man, what we gonna do?
This call is from a federal prison.
Hey, Remo, we trying to do that Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah.
Trying to do it Tuesday.
Nah, for sure, bro. We miss you like a motherfucker out here, bro. And it, and it ain't, it ain't the same, bro. It ain't the same.
Man, this shit boring now, brick.
It's, it, it, it's all, with all love and light when we get out. You already know we some hell of a niggas regardless, man. I ain't talking about nobody else up here, no.
Yeah, man, this shit boring, man. But this, listen, bro, bro, I'll be real though, bro, like, like, how like LA, like YouTube used to have like a different story?
You keeping up with like what's going on in the blogs?
Tory just got stabbed, man.
You seen that Tory Lanez got stabbed up in jail?
Whoa, Tory Lanez got stabbed on the, on the fifty, fifty yard?
Oh, that nigga, uh, that nigga, he headed to, uh, LA hospital right now.
Oh, wow. They bust down Tory. What they busted down? They took his story and shit. They don't nobody know what happened.
We don't, we don't know the full details yet.
Well, well, wait though. Tory dropped a Kendrick Lamar diss track up like a month ago, Brick, you feel me? And niggas was online warning him and sending him threats.
Yeah, it get like that. I don't know why they think Kendrick ain't from nowhere. They keep on underestimating that. That really from where he from. I ain't gonna say nothing on these lines, but that really from where he from. But this the thing, he on the, he on the program yard to where he ain't even, it ain't, it gotta be over a drug date or something because that's the thing, right? Uh, 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 where he at, it's no politics as far as gangs and all that. That's why people be trying to go other places where it's structured. Cause anything go where he at, like the PCs run the yard.
I told you, really. Told you.
Yeah. They ask you when you get there, like you active or you programming it? You say you programming, they, they gonna fuck with you, but the PCs got gangs on them yards. They call it the deuce five.
Wait, wait, wait. What's it called? PC?
It's called the deuce five. Look it up. The deuce five, they, 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 they run the PC yard. Then if you tell them you active, they gonna get off on you. Cause they, uh, they don't like people who ain't snitching.
But yo, yo, question right, I, yo, what's your best advice then for Tory Lanez to navigate jail and not get stabbed up again? Cause you know, like, he's like a celebrity, you know, like, he's probably like new, you feel me, right? Cause he been in jail right now for like a year.
Stop being so friendly with everybody. Don't talk to niggas, man. You got status, man. And use that as your way around here. Look, I'm in the court right. Yeah, nah, but the best thing he can do, bro, is be friendly, man. I mean, not stop being friendly, bro. You know what I mean? Everybody, I say, before I left, what he had all them people in his cell and he was freestyling, kicking it with all of the, 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 the Gardena Chris and I, man, that's how.
And then for Christmas, Brick, right? Brick, right? So look, and then for Christmas, he filled up everybody's like commissary into the max.
Yeah, so when you stop doing for people, then they gonna turn on you.
That's what I just said.
Oh, that's crazy, bro.
You turn in the food.
Lunch meat.
That's crazy.
Yeah, immediately. Like you turn in the lunch, you gotta, you kinda gotta come and, and, and the savage side of you gotta come out first before the nice side. And it, 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 you ain't gotta do nothing, but you know.
Yo, Brick, yo, bro. Um, okay, so do you still have long hair or do you have like short hair now?
Nah, I still got my dread.
Now, eh, now, bro, listen, man, there's been like a lot of controversy, man. Who threw that hair, Brick? Who threw that hair?
Hey, Brick, hey, who braiding your hair up in that motherfucker, Brick? There's Sean saying.
Me. All the day at home, because ain't nobody ever touched my hair, ever, at, every jail trip. I started my dread.
Ah, for sure.
I started my dread. My girl will tell you, I know how to braid. I know how to do all that shit. I've been having hair for too long. I got my hair four braids. On the show, I used to braid my hair. Them little four braids, that was me braid my hair.
Oh, nah, that's facts. Wait, wait, I cool. Are you like, I just get like.
So listen, so listen, right? Motherfuckers in here, they so weird. They talk about that. I, listen, when I first got here, I had nothing, right? I have borrowed.
I got dreads, ain't no need for braiding.
And then I paid them back, nigga, and with those six O's.
I do this shit and I got spit around.
Motherfucker don't touch me, don't talk to me crazy, whatever, nigga, it's cool. Cause before some niggas looked out for a nigga, some weirdos looked out for a nigga, cuz. So, you know what I mean? If the weirdo, ay, ay, check it out, ay, I need your help on this. Woo, woo, I'm not tripping, nigga. A motherfucker can't say nothing to a nigga, cuz. On six O's, I don't get next to them. I ain't never been in no cell with these people. I ain't never sat at no table, played cards, basketball, none of that. You get me?
So you, so you saying that you did get some grease from a transgender?
Man, loose was right there, nigga, on West Side Rolling, nigga. The same nigga that got up on loose and told him that he could fight, y'all could fight, woo, woo. Loose turned down the fade from all time. Man, loose is the biggest hoe in here right there, bro. On the dead homies, nigga. Oh, six O's, I got some grease, nigga. I could tell, nigga.
Ah, for sure, for sure. But that, you know, you, you know, nigga tried to flip it and make it into something. I'm like, man, Brick is all those things. I said, Brick comfortable with who he is, like.
Exactly. On West Side Rolling, bro. The motherfucker came in, nigga, I'm working, man. I laugh about it with my wife. Look, I laugh about it with my wife on the phone, cuz that shit funny, nigga.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, I ain't gonna sit here and lie about it and all that shit, cuz now that would be tricky. But on the set, asking what did the transgender ass come for a fade though?
What?
Wait, 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 pause, pause.
You didn't hear that?
Transgender cases are there?
And told, and told him he was gonna put that metal up on Cubs, nigga, on the dead homies.
Cut it out, man.
Right back in the cell, man. That nigga scary.
Where the transgender from? Wh- what are you claiming?
Uh, uh, DC or some shit.
Oh, word, word. I'm about to say.
Yeah. Ay, look, no, but now listen to this. Now he up there programming with a nigga who just got out the cell, but just got out the hole for raping a punk, nigga. And he from A3. And the nigga up there best friends with Cubs, up there lolly-dotty with the nigga. You get what I'm saying? So it's like, bro, you can't really, you have no wrong to speak. You didn't squabble me. You mentioned me as a.
This call is from a federal prison.
That, that I had allegations of talking too much on hood, nigga, on the dead homies and.
Anyway, he wasn't hit over no debt, but somebody probably did send a hit on that boy, so, yeah, he in there. They say it was a diss record he put out against Kendrick? I ain't hear nothing about that. What diss record? He said something about Kendrick? You know Mexicans love Kendrick too, don't they? Mexicans love Kendrick. I know, I know some Mexicans love Kendrick. Not like the niggas, but I know some Mexicans that love that boy. I know it is. I know it's in there. Cassie got exposed badly.
It was a really bad day today in court for Cassie. It was disastrous. It was disastrous for the prosecution and their entire case against Diddy.
What?
In court, it was pretty evident, bruh. The prosecution is in over their head. You could tell there is a clear gap in skill between a prosecution and Diddy team of attorneys being spearheaded by Brian Steele. A lot of y'all was introduced to Brian Steele when y'all seen his brilliant defense of Young Thug. Young Thug was a hundred percent guilty of a lot of those charges, but Brian Steele was so brilliant, he was so outclassing the prosecution that he was able to get a mistrial and he was able to get the prosecution to buckle to their knees and give Young Thug a plea deal that allow Young Thug to get out and pay zero jail time, but a suspended sentence. And now he's working his magic for Diddy. Like, do you see how Diddy is hugging his good white man? Diddy knows his savior has arrived and this is his only hope of beating this case. And so far, Brian Steele is putting on a absolute execution and display of brilliance, bruh. Whatever Diddy is paying this man, five, 10 million i- is well deserved money. Brian Steele is outsmarting the prosecution every way possible. Diddy already had his team of attorneys. He hired Brian Steele midway through the process. And when Brian Steele came on board, you could tell from the very beginning, Brian Steele was thinking 20 steps ahead and trying to outsmart everyone. Cause the first thing we started to hear when Brian Steele came on board was, yo, Diddy is looking for more women on his defense team. You know why? Cause Brian Steele walked in and Brian Steele asked the team of attorneys, which one of y'all are gonna be cross-examining Cassie? And the attorney was like, yo, us. We're great at cross-examination. We're gonna get her in all her inconsistency lies. And Brian Steele says, yo, is you stupid? Like, are you dumb? You're gonna have a bunch of Caucasian white men cross-examinate Cassie and being really aggressive with her on the stand? For a SA and a trafficking case? Are you stupid? Cut the sausage party, bro. Where the women at, bruh? So then Brian Steele begin to orchestrate to bring in more women. Brian Steele specifically brought in three women who were all victims of SA. And they were gonna be the women that were gonna be cross-examining Cassie, quote unquote, checking her. Just that small detail that Brian Steele was able to catch that nobody else was able to catch, shows why Brian Steele gets paid a big bucks. And today, that decision paid off, bruh. That decision essentially just saved Diddy. Yo, Diddy and Brian Steele and his attorneys, they were fearful of Cassie's testimony. That was gonna be the one thing they felt. Yo, we can't really beat this. Yo, this is, day was up at night thinking about Cassie testifying. So far, they've been able to manage this pretty well. Because you know what happened? Brian Steele decision of including a SA victim who is an attorney to cross-examine Cassie, that paid off magically, bruh. Because that person was able to get a lot of information out of Cassie that ain't make her look good, bruh. And it made Diddy look like, dare I say it, an innocent man, to be honest, bruh. Now, I'm not saying he innocent. I'm saying it made him look innocent. Even though Cassie was being cross-examined by Diddy attorney, Cassie was sharing a laugh with the attorney during the cross-examination. It didn't feel like a cross-examination. She wasn't pressuring Cassie to answer the yes or no questions. She was sort of like bypassing it. And just Cassie showing that level of comfortability came across great to the jurors. And it looked really great for Diddy attorneys. However, it was still a cross-examination and they still got some really great info out of Cassie and got her to admit to a lot that looked really favorable on Diddy's behalf.
Lunchtime update, Cassie on the stand, her first day of cross-examination. And it's, I don't wanna say it's super intense because Diddy's lawyer, Anna Estavea, she's doing an amazing job at being very gentle. I mean, Cassie and her have exchanged a few laughs while she was on the stand, which I thought was pretty incredible. And additionally, there's a lot of explicit graphic text that we're seeing from Cassie to Diddy and vice versa. And Estavea is saying, look, if you don't wanna read these, you don't have to, which I thought was really nice. Also, when Cassie answers, and it's kind of a yes or no question, Estavea isn't like, it's yes or no. She's being very, very calm and, and very kind. Now, what we saw, like, right off the bat here, was a, a conversation via BlackBerry between Diddy and Cassie about two and a half years into their relationship. And remember, at this point, Cassie testified during direct that he had a, her, she didn't wanna do freak-offs, you know, all this stuff.
And that right there is the basis of the prosecution's entire case against Diddy. Cassie was the first one who accused Diddy of trafficking. That was included in her lawsuit. And the only reason why she included that was because of, of, I think like the Mann Act, right? That e- e- extends like the window for where a victim of trafficking can sue. So, what, so Cassie included that. But when Cassie is testifying, I didn't wanna do this, you know, I was doing it against my will. He was making me do this. And then the gigolos or the male escorts are testifying, oh no, she instructed me to take a piss on her. Oh no, she's the one who handed me her money. And then you see text messages where she's, like, where she's requested to do the free calls. And people are like, hold on, bro. You're requesting to do these things because you wanna keep Diddy to yourself. So if you're requesting these things in messages, in emails, it's kinda hard to now paint the narrative. Again, I'm not saying Diddy didn't force her to do these things. I'm saying how it comes across at trial? If we're trying to use our, just our reasoning, our comprehension to figure out who's winning this case and who's not? It looks a way when there's emails and messages of you asking for the free calls.
And she actually said that, uh, he said, you know, I miss you already. When do you want to FO? That was Diddy. And she said, I'm always ready to FO. And again, this was August of 2009, about two years into their relationship. They talk about, uh, when it would be best for them. And then, uh, they talk about getting a, an escort involved. And then we see a text message that says, uh, I can't wait to stare at your BBD. You guys know what I'm talking about. And again, lawyer did not make her say it out loud. Uh, there's, yeah, a lot of, a lot of explicit text messages. And, uh, look, I think some of the, the takeaways here at what the defense is, is doing and what they're eliciting out of Cassie is, again, they're, the email saying she loves him after these FOs. And, and don't, don't get mad at me. Don't tell me, you know, I, I understand how trauma works, but I'm just relaying all this to you guys. Uh, she, oh, so Cassie testified that she had to do freak-offs during her period. And we were shown an email where Diddy, for FO planning purposes, asks her when she's getting her period. And, and she says she's skipping it that month. Additionally, she testified that she didn't wanna be a swinger because she didn't wanna see him with another woman. Well, we see, uh, an exchange where she says she has a fantasy about seeing him with another woman.
Brian Steele did a very great job at making the security guard, the second person who testified, and making him look discreditable. He hopped off that stand and people were looking at him like, man, bruh, like, this witness was a waste of time. Cause there's no way a jury is gonna buy anything he just said. Cause Brian Steele got him to admit that he copied a footage to show it to his wife. He was cloud chasing. He lied about a couple of things, lied on the report. Brian Steele discredited him completely. Cassie is the star witness. This is her story. Her story is why Diddy is currently being indicted and charged. So when you catch Cassie in a couple of white lies, like, ay, yo, ay, yo, he made me do this when I was leaking. But then Diddy is asking, ay, yo, when is your period? So we don't film. It's kinda looking crazy. When you're texting him, yo, I, bro, I wanna F right now. Yo, I really missed the free calls. It looks a certain way. When you're texting, oh, I love you, thank you. It looks a certain way. Now, he, there's a, yo, there's like, uh, there's like that message, which to me is like the smoking gun. Where Cassie expressed, now Cassie's, yo, I didn't wanna do it. He made me do it. No. Cassie would express she loved doing the free calls in the messages, but the smoking gun is her, her reasoning for why she wanted to slow down on the free calls. And it had nothing to do with her feeling degraded, her feeling disgusted, her feeling, no, she didn't wanna do it. Well, you're gonna have to watch the rest of the video to hear.
And I'm paraphrasing here. Um, she also, uh, says at one point that, quote, she'd travel anywhere to be with him. And this is while they are discussing, uh, an FO in, in this one message, this BlackBerry message. Um, yeah, she, oh, so, mm, oh, another big thing here is, uh, the drug talk and the opioid talk. So Cassie testified that Diddy told her he was addicted to opioids. And the defense is basically saying, well, did you see him try to get off these opioids or come down from them? And she said, yeah. And then they said, well, you know, that makes one volatile, angry. And again, I'm paraphrasing, but basically what they were alluding to is that Diddy's violent behavior and aggressive behavior and all of his mood swings that she talked about were because he was coming down, uh, from, from opioids. Let me make sure. I, I feel like I have so many notes from today. Um, yeah, again, a lot of graphic messages, mainly about Cassie saying how much she liked it after it happened. It was so good. And she's talking about FOs. Oh, something really big that they're trying to prove here. Uh, Cassie felt like she didn't have the words to relate to Diddy because she was so young that she didn't wanna do this and yada, yada. Referring to the FOs. Well, we've seen a lot of messages from Cassie to Diddy that are, are paragraphs, let's say, explaining certain things to him. Really seeming to, to wear her heart on her sleeve. Uh, at one point, she said, look, I'm unsure about the FOs because I feel like, you know, before, when we were doing them. And, and this is a few years into their relationship. She said, you know, before we were doing them, I could spend time with you after. Now we're doing them and you're leaving right away.
These messages are showing Cassie enjoyed the FOs. She enjoyed it. It wasn't a thing that she was dreading or a thing that she was looking at as, oh my God, I, no, she enjoyed it. Her only gripe against it, when it got to a point, was she wanted more time with Diddy. She wanted Diddy to do the FOs and then stay there, cuddle and treat her like an actual girlfriend. After a while of doing the FOs, he began to treat her like a girl just for the FOs. He would only link up with her to do the FOs. And she would express that, yo, I have no problems doing the FOs. I just have a problem when you treat me like a girl who only do the FOs. Afterwards, you head out and you don't really spend time with me. This is not, this is not common across of somebody who was trafficked, bruh. Yo, I'm all for protect women, protect women, protect women, bro. Because I understand how I will feel if my sister was in this situation, bruh. I would believe my sister. But in this situation, bruh, where I'm being tasked with hearing out the facts and hearing out the details? And I'm being asked to make my decision or to give my opinion, it's hard for me to come up here and faking to let you guys know, yeah, yo, Diddy, yo, bro, Diddy did that, bro. Ah, it is hard. Because Diddy is a garbage human being. Diddy put hands on this woman. Diddy should be in jail just for that. But if you're asking me to give my opinion on whether or not Cassie was a victim of being trafficked? Yo, how can I tell you guys with a straight face after hearing stuff like this, man? And it's hard and a lot of content creators are staring clear of this, bruh. Because it's hard for us to give a real opinion without being painted as Diddy apologists. Nobody thinks Diddy is a good guy. Nobody thinks Diddy is a hundred percent innocent.
Nobody.
In regards to this relationship. But he's not being charged with a lot of the other stuff that we know for a fact that Diddy did. Because those stuff.
He said, motherfuckers don't wanna get an honest opinion. Who don't? I've been doing that the entire time I've been on camera. I don't give a fuck. I told y'all, there's a reason why Hugh Hefner had the Playboy mansion and had these bitches come in. If they wanted to, they had a home from eighteen to twenty-five. And between eighteen and twenty-five, you were straight. You could come to the Playboy mansion and you had a house, bitch. At the Playboy mansion between eighteen and twenty-five. Why? Because Hugh Hefner understood women to the fullest.
He can be charged for it, right? Like they're past the statute of limitation. So now the trafficking is what he's trying to get caught on, but yo, it's not sounding like it's trafficking.
For, for work and I'm not getting that time with you.
Now, see, Diddy fault. He loved her too, so he can't fuck with her. Past twenty-five.
So the defense is kinda like, well, it looks like she's able to communicate this stuff. And, and is it fair to say that this is the reason that you didn't wanna do freak-offs? Not everything that you testified yesterday. Again, don't get mad at me. I'm just explaining, uh, about what the defense's strategy seems to be and what they're going for. Oh, they also, uh, went into the fact that, look, you testified that it would take you days to come down from these FOs and, and you would waste so much time of your life trying to recover. You know, Diddy was doing the same thing. He was coming down from these two. You know, is it fair to say that he was still running a business, running the world, the world, sorry? Running his own life, running Bad Boy Records and traveling here and there, basically saying, well, you know, he was fine. He didn't have to recover for days. That's your problem. Uh, again, just some observations, uh, Cassie doing a great job holding it together, so calm, so poised. And Anna Estavea, really great. I mean, a lot of defense attorneys can badger these witnesses and really come across unlikable to the jury. But like I said, they're sharing laughs. They, um, you know, she's, she's not too aggressive. She's getting her point across without being a jerk. So I will give you guys more later.
It's gonna be hard to prove that Cassie was forced into this to a level where it meets trafficking. Because if you don't have any messages or correspondence to where you're telling him, no, I don't wanna do this. And none of the people who have testified, the male escorts, none of them have said, yo, Cassie was, was like not trying to do it. No, they say, yo, she was looking like she enjoyed herself. That's not taken away from her experience. She could have very well be doing that to impress Diddy, right? It's not taken away from her experience whatsoever. But it's gonna be really hard, bruh. It's gonna be really hard to prove that this meet the level of trafficking when there's messaging. When there's messages saying, yo, I enjoyed this. Yo, when are we gonna do it again? Bruh, I can't wait to do it again, yo. Hey yo, next time, can we please get a, a tab, a tab it more rough?
Like, can we just, like, it's not trafficking. Like, can we just agree that it's not trafficking? Like, we know it's not trafficking. We know Diddy is a fucked up nigga. And yeah, he should probably be locked up for beating that girl up like that all, all that time and all that pussy ass shit he did. But he paid for that. Twenty million dollars. He paid for that too. But he ain't traffic shit. Now, he probably got some other shit. Y'all know this all started from some other shit, right? The whole Diddy shit began where he tried to sue them people and then Keefe D got locked up. Keefe D. I think they still got some shit. Because there's some other charges in this Rico, right? It's not just the sex trafficking. They gonna get, they trying to get him on something. He not finna get the sex trafficking though. Let's agree to that.
Yo, I implore anybody to go ahead and read those messages. Yeah, it's hard to look at those messages and come across as if Cassie didn't enjoy it or she wasn't a willing participant in the F Os. Y'all let me know in the comment section, what do you guys think about this? All right. Let me know, man. Let me know in the.
She is not going down for that.
Oh, nowadays females will give you some pussy before they buy you a burger. Why is that? Because the burger holes.
Uh, we not finna go there. Mexicans say Tory Lanez hit was personal.
What?
So OG Hollywood tapping in with a Tory Lanez update. So the Mexicans out in Cali are saying that that hit was personal. Yeah, let's get into that.
I gotta hit you guys with some crazy information. So I did a little digging and this is about Tory Lanez. This is the person that stabbed him.
Yeah, that's Kyle. I seen, we, we went over that already. How that nigga said, nigga said something about his girl and shit. But he ain't even have visitation, so that's Kyle. So yeah, that's why I wack calling cop on that shit. Anyway, fuck all this shit. I think, yeah, I think that's about it. I'm thinking I'm finna rock this up. It's almost five and never mind. You know, you know what I would do? I want to go over again. Y'all know how they would try to say that man. They had a shot that man son down, right? Because of sus- uh, suspected stolen car. And all. He supposedly had a gun, pointed a gun to shit. The car wasn't even stolen, right? Man, I can't remember what the fuck that was. What, what a nigga name. But, um, I can't remember. But the car, the car was reported stolen, right?
Next tonight, authorities in Ohio say the man who allegedly rammed his car into a sheriff's deputy, killing him, did so intentionally.
A black father kills a cop after his son was killed.
Yeah, Rodney him. Yeah, free Rodney, man. So the police killed his son. They showed him a video of his son getting gunned down and shit. How that shit happen? He left that bit of straw within like an hour and a half, two hours. He uh, he ran down the sheriff and whatever, a random officer. Hit their ass, killed their ass. Nah, shit. Trying to find out the car wasn't stolen. It was reported stolen by the dealership for late payments. And some whole other shit. He ain't have a gun. They said he pointed a gun at him, but he ain't even had a gun like by him and shit like that. I don't even remember. But either way, that's foul play by the dealership for reporting a car stolen just for late payments. Ain't that why you got repossession people? Ain't that why you got repo people? But how the fuck you gonna report the car stolen? It's just sad situation.
By the police department. This is an incredibly ironic, twisted, detailed tragedy here.
Oh yeah. And then they say the man wasn't even driving the car. Said it was an old lady driving the car. Said Rodney wasn't even driving the car. See, it's, it's so many twists in it, but the car wasn't even stolen when they shot his son. The dealership reported the car stolen because it was late on payments. He didn't have a gun pointed at the police before they shot his ass down. They say his daddy killed a random officer, but it was an old lady driving. He was in the passenger seat when the shit happened. Man, that shit, it's a lot of crazy. It's a lot of shit to this story, ain't it?
Turns on to Martin, Martin Luther King Drive. Family members still follow. At one oh five P M, Hinton floors the vehicle, crossing into the opposing traffic lanes and drives directly at Deputy Henderson and hitting him.
Here's the left turn arrow right there. So he went through this. The family, keep in mind, is watching all this happen.
So the new indictments today are related to the original crime that set off this deadly chain of events. The new indictments are for three people accused of stealing a car and a gun. Investigators say May first, these three and eighteen-year-old Ryan Hinton stole a Kia in Kentucky. The fugitive apprehension squad founded in East Price Hill. And when police walked up to that car, all four ran off. So that was captured on body cam and police say they saw a gun and an officer shot his gun, hitting and killing Ryan Hinton. So investigators say it was after Ryan Hinton's father saw the body cam where his son was shot to death, that he went looking for an officer to get revenge and ran over Deputy Larry Henderson.
Now some breaking news right now. The man accused of intentionally hitting and killing Deputy Larry Henderson has filed a lawsuit in federal court.
So Rodney Hinton Jr. is seeking twenty-five million dollars in damages, claiming his civil rights were violated.
You shot great, but you shot late. High limit. This is the rundown part, kid.
I'm gonna give you the rundown. I'm gonna give you the rundown.
Rodney Hinton Jr., the father who was obviously seeking revenge for the death of his son, Ryan Hinton, who was gunned down by the hands of the officers there in Cincinnati, Ohio. And now Rodney Hinton Jr., the father, after getting that revenge that he sought and killing and taking the life of Larry Henderson, the officer who was working traffic duty. They're now saying that Rodney Hinton Jr. is now suing for twenty-five million dollars for the violation of his civil rights during that arrest, right? After killing the officer Larry Henderson.
The man accused of intentionally hitting and killing Deputy Larry Henderson has filed a lawsuit in federal court.
So Rodney Hinton Jr. is seeking twenty-five million dollars in damages, claiming his civil rights were violated. Hinton is currently being held in the Claremont County Jail after his arrest on May second, following the crash near uh, the U C campus. The lawsuit names the state of Ohio, the Cincinnati Police Department, Sheriff Charmaine McCaffey, the Hamilton County Justice Center, and ten others. The suit claims officers tried to intimidate Hinton in court and violated the thirteenth and fourteenth amendments, among other allegations. Now, so far officials have not commented on this lawsuit.
And it's mighty funny that we ain't seen none of this footage yet. We have not seen the footage, right? Showing the arrest of Rodney Hinton at the crime scene. Now they showed us Rodney Hinton getting arrested at the hospital, right? After treatment. And it don't look like the brother got too much treatment because he couldn't hardly move, right? In the body cam footage, this man could barely walk, y'all. They had to double walk him, as they said. One officer on his arm, other officer on that arm. Say, man, what they doing to that boy up in there? Now, the chief is claiming that she's, you know, being transparent. And she put that video out showing the officer involved shooting of eighteen-year-old Rodney Hinton there.
Fuck that. You know exactly what the fuck they did. They beat the shit out that man. You know damn well. They beat the shit out that man every chance they get. That's why it was a clip of a black man making so he got some was uh, safe and shit. It must've been after he filed the lawsuit.
Kicked this whole ordeal law, right? These tragic events leading up to Larry Henderson, the officer, being killed. And now I'm wondering, okay, where's the transparency at with the actual arrest? At the crime scene where we can see Rodney Hinton Jr. getting out of that vehicle or being taken out of that wrecked vehicle after he struck the officer there on the scene there, right? We need to see exactly what went on because obviously Rodney is saying, hey man, y'all beat the hell out of me, man. Y'all beat the shit out of me out there, man. Now I'm suing. That's right. Big ass lawsuit. Like staying on Martin, right? Everybody get ready for that big ass lawsuit. Twenty-five million, man. And we can see in that body camera footage when, you know, that they show conveniently of him being arrested at the hospital. Nah, 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 nah. Show us the arrest footage, right? Because maybe they arrested that man first before they took him to the hospital. See? Might be some, you know, violation of rights right there. Maybe they felt like, well, we ain't gonna take him to the hospital. Violate this man rights all over. So as we seen him in the hospital, right? On that body cam footage being transferred over to the jail.
Can you stand up for me, sir?
Yeah, no, you fucked up.
I'll put this around your waist.
No, they damn near that man out there.
They just, I take this right around.
Damn near to that and he was already fucked up from crashing. Brother, like he don't want to fall like, man. I would've made that carry me.
Deputies then load Hinton into the van for the trip to the jail in that neighboring county. It's Claremont County.
All right, easiest way is just turn around and slide in. But face me and then.
Y'all take me where the fuck.
Now, I couldn't find nowhere how long that brother Rodney Hinton Jr. stayed in the hospital. Maybe this is another part, you know, that we'll find out that's gonna be related to the lawsuit because it seemed as if he wasn't healed up all the way. Barely moving in any circumstance. They had to help him with everything. He could barely walk, let alone barely stand up or talk when they tried to communicate with the brother. So, is all this gonna be in the lawsuit to, well, you know, Rodney Hinton Jr. feels like he was, you know, violated as far as his rights go because they did not allow him time, proper time, adequate time to heal up after that accident. You know, with this officer Larry Henderson being killed after being struck by. But what about the time that, you know, Rodney Hinton Jr. actually needed to heal up himself after that accident? See, so that right there, I feel might be a part of that lawsuit that they just came in and, you know, yanked him up out the hospital without proper care, you know, then put him in jail. Well, we all know ain't no proper care in there. So, um, and then another element and aspect of it, did they violate that man by beating on him, mistreating him, tasering him? You know, putting a knee in his neck, putting a gun to his head, right? Maybe saying racial slur by us not having a chance to view the actual um, crime scene footage with the ambulance picking up the officer from the scene. Yes, that's what I would say. It probably, you know, got him in positions to where we couldn't see on the body camera. They get a little choke out move on him, right? Did a little eye gouge on him, you know? Man, I say, man, the people dirty, man. Them people is dirty right after this accident. That's a violation. Yeah. So this is probably where that is coming from, but don't quote me on that. But if I had to really guess, that's what I would say. Y'all violated my civil rights? Now I want twenty-five million in my hand. You know, it was another turn of events. Speaking of crazy, they said it was an old lady that was driving the car. Reports were, you know, coming out, not from the media. Let's be clear. This was coming from social media. This one coming from the news media. Now we got to know that it was some crazy conspiracies out there also. Being that a woman took to Facebook claiming that an old lady was driving the vehicle that Rodney Hinton Jr. struck the officer in, that they said he was driving. But this lady came forward and she swears to God, right? That she seen the old lady driving the vehicle and Rodney Hinton Jr. was in the passenger seat knocked out. This is what this lady says. And a lot of people have, you know, begin to believe that narrative, but the only thing about that, that mean that this would be a giant conspiracy and all these people are risking their jobs just to cover up who was actually driving. And you know, I don't get it, but you know, I understand why people would love a big plot twist like that. But in this case, with the family of Rodney Hinton Jr. following right behind him, they documented this. They must have the evidence in the video surveillance camera footage to prove that the family was behind him every drive of that way up until where he drove into the officer intentionally striking and killing him. They were even skeptical about the man driving. That's why he didn't get straight in his vehicle when it came out the police station after seeing that body camera footage, right? He rode with family before they took him back to the vehicle. Now I ain't gonna give you no narrative. I'm gonna give you the rundown. Uh, it was this update done by this news station there that says the driver who hit and killed a Hamilton County deputy near U C has died. He was also identified. He was also identified by police. So as you see, they're speaking about Rodney Hinton Jr. being the one that allegedly died.
Right.
After striking that officer at UC, okay? Now, it goes on to say on the same post that they posted on Facebook, deputy hit, killed by a vehicle near UC's campus. Driver dead. Now, you have this woman come out, okay, with this story, LaShawn Hankerson on Facebook. She swears up and down that she was on the crime scene. She says she witnessed this old lady driving that vehicle and Rodney Hinton Jr. knocked out in the passenger seat. Okay, so now we have a conspiracy, right? They already wrote up the indictment. They're telling us this is how it went down. He was by himself driving. Now, she comes along, LaShawn Hankerson on Facebook, saying, ah, that's not true. I actually have the knowledge, because I was a witness, I was there, that it was an old lady driving that car. Through a monkey wrench in the whole system. Now people are confused. Well, I'm not confused. I'm going by allegedly what happened. You know, if you wanna go that route and believe it's conspiracy, that's you. That's your business. You have every right to do so. But we're gonna stick to the facts, okay? Now, according to the indictment, he was in the car by himself. Well, apparently Rodney Hinton Jr. didn't die in that car crash that killed Larry Henderson, the officer. So maybe they, you know, got some wrong information down the line while this was breaking news. And they put that update, that false update out there. Now people are saying what LaShawn Hankerson said on Facebook about the old lady driving. They're trying to equate that with the news station saying that a driver died, but keep in mind, they were speaking about Rodney Hinton, because they said he. But we do know that when LaShawn Hankerson took to Facebook to, you know, tell this alleged testimony that, uh, according to her, she says, I just seen the most craziest shit ever, man. This older lady, right, just hit a sheriff standing in the crosswalk so hard. He bleeding from his ears and all, man, ain't breathing or nothing. Then another body in the car unresponsive. I pray both make it through. I'm in shock. Prayers to their families, man. Now, this is what she posted. And this is where people starting to believe that when the article was put out, that update that Local 12 made about, you know, the driver of being dead from that crash. Nah, they're saying now that, look, that wasn't Rodney, that was the old lady. According to what LaShawn Hankerson is saying. So now we have this big conspiracy of people who are now believing it's being covered up that an old lady was actually driving that vehicle. And as according to LaShawn Hankerson's post, it was another unresponsive body in the car. Being that could have been Rodney Hinton Jr. So, you know, like I said, this has been proven to be false information. And it was a woman, you know, that rebutted this on Facebook in those comments. And she says that this woman has, you know, mental issues. She don't know why this lady made up something like this. This is crazy, right? Now, she even doubles down on what she said and believed that she saw. She says this. I literally was right there yesterday with my effing child in the car with me. I got out to help once I seen I couldn't do anything. I started crying and this other lady was praying and grabbed my arm and wrist and we both started praying while looking at the sheriff. And it was an old lady driving, not no dude. They are lying. This shit sad. And she posted the crime scene where Larry Henderson lost his life and where Rodney Hinton Jr. was alleged to be the driver. When people started questioning her, she replied with this. Because they wanted to know, hey, you know, we're starting to believe you now. I believe it was an old lady driving. They trying to set Rodney up. So once people started, you know, following the narrative that she put out, there was an old lady driving, this is what she said, when people who didn't believe, you know, that this was true. She says, I promised to God I made a post and everything. The man was unconscious in the passenger seat and it was an older lady driving. They kept asking who the driver was. She kept hysterically crying and falling out like she was in shock. She did that. They are trying to do that man in. I literally tried to get him out the car. He was stuck and knocked clean out, airbags out and all, right? Now, this is what she saying. Now, a lot of people starting to believe that narrative, being that Rodney Hinton Jr. had some abrasions and scratches, right, on his forehead. And did that come from the actual accident or did that come from the police brutality on the young brother after these laws took him down, right? And arrested him for the crime of killing Larry Henderson. Now, many have come to believe that those scratches, those abrasions on Mr. Hinton's forehead are from, uh, the airbags being deployed during that, uh, accident there. And they're saying, well, that got to line up with, you know, the injuries and scratches on his forehead. So, you know, this has to be true that he wasn't even driving. Well, not necessary. This lady is saying it was already proven, right? The family gave the statement to their attorney that Rodney was driving by himself. The prosecutor said that the family followed right behind Rodney every step of the way, all the way up until the accident. So we gotta know that the family, you know, followed him. They watched him, you know, uh, do this vehicular homicide, killing the officer, right? And we gotta know that as soon as it happened, since they're following him, all these family members instantly got out the vehicle that they were following Rodney in and ran over there where he was at. Now, what she's saying kind of would sound kind of true as far as, you know, the old lady, you know, uh, crying hysterically, it could have been the grandmother after the wreck. Now, what LaShawn Hankerson could have very well seen is the family already right there on the crash scene because they was following Rodney. And maybe the old lady she seen crying hysterically and praying was the actual grandmother, right, of Ryan Hinton. And she seen all this go down with the other family members, so of course they would probably be surrounding that vehicle. But I don't know how she got the old lady was driving, right? And, uh, you know, people started to piece the story from Local 12 news that updated that they put out there on Facebook saying that the driver had died who struck the officer. So, you know, a wild conspiracy theory was just drew up. Especially with her saying it was a man in the passenger seat that was unconscious. So, you know, a lot of people, man, you know, really believe in that narrative. And now being that they're not actually showing us the video from the actual wreck where Rodney Hinton Jr. struck the officer, killing him. Well, we'll never know if LaShawn Hankerson is telling the truth because the video ain't gonna lie. The video actually show you who was behind the wheel. So that is kind of suspicious that they're not showing the video. But like, you know, I said earlier, is that because they have the footage of them actually abusing Rodney Hinton Jr. on that crime scene after he ran over the officer? We don't know how they handled that man. They could have very well.
We know exactly how they handled that man.
Right? Did some unethical things to him.
Exactly.
Right, while they were in the process of arresting. He says, if they aren't using cameras for evidence, they sure to F aren't going to listen to a black woman with a record. It was several of us right there that witnessed that ish. They didn't even care about the dude in the car. Me and the other lady was trying to help him. They didn't care about the black dude, only the officer. Okay, so what happened about the old lady? Now, let's go back earlier where she said that she literally tried to get him out the car. He was stuck and knocked out clean, airbags out and all. Right, so this is a lot of information she put into these posts. And a lot of people believe Ms. Hankerson. But like I said before, the evidence is saying something different. And like I said, this would have to be a completely total conspiracy uh, if that was the case of an old lady driving, being that the family had already said that, you know, Mr. Hinton was driving the vehicle alone. And that's also proven by other people, witnesses and video that they haven't released yet to the public. Now, many might still believe the theory, the narrative that LaShawn Hankerson put out, and that's fine. You have the right to believe what you want to believe, but I use common sense, right? They can't hide an old lady's body, right, without being identified, okay? They can't just do that. Nah, you know how much of a lawsuit that would be? Second of all, right, uh, where's the family of this old lady? Where they at? Ain't nobody gonna say nothing? Don't nobody miss their mama, their grandma, their sister? Hmm? Come on, man. Sometimes people have to really think, bruh. You gotta sit back and wait for all the facts to come forward. Then you have to present these facts, you know, and make sure that you're saying, you know, correct information regarding these cases because you don't never want to get nothing misconstrued or confused when you're actually reporting on these matters. Now that all the teens have been caught that fled from the vehicle that Ryan Hinton also ran from and was shot down by the police there in Cincinnati, Ohio. You have these three teens being indicted and charged for stolen property. That's right, theft, receiving stolen property. And nowhere in there do they say that this vehicle was up for repo. They're saying it was definitely stolen out of North Kentucky.
So the new indictments today are related to the original crime that set off this deadly chain of events. The new indictments are for three people accused of stealing a car and a gun. Jurell Austin, Sincere Grigsby, and DeAnthony Bullock are facing seven charges. Investigators say May 1st, these three and 18-year-old Ryan Hinton stole a Kia in Kentucky. The fugitive apprehension squad founded in East Price Hill. And when police walked up to that car, all four ran off. So that was captured on body cam and police say they saw a gun and an officer shot his gun hitting and killing Ryan Hinton. Police say a stolen gun was found loaded and inside the stolen car. Now, another gun was found outside of the car. The three who got away were caught eventually. They were already arraigned on some of the charges. Now, with these new indictments today, they're facing charges of obstructing official business, theft, receiving stolen property, improperly handling a firearm in a vehicle, and having weapons under disability, meaning there was a reason they were not legally allowed to have a gun. So investigators say it was after Ryan Hinton's father saw the body cam where his son was shot to death that he went looking for an officer to get revenge and ran over Deputy Larry Henderson.
Now, if you're listening real closely to that news broadcast about the indictments and the new charges for the three teens that were involved with Ryan Hinton in the stolen car, they say that yes, indeed, Ryan Hinton was there with the three teens when this vehicle was stolen, okay? So I don't know if the three teens gave up statements verifying that Ryan was with them that day, you know, or if the, you know, the media, the news is just saying this, you know, making this up and going along with the narrative of the car being stolen. They haven't released the name of this cop who killed 18-year-old Ryan Hinton as of yet. And people are upset, right? And they're saying he didn't have to shoot Ryan. But he's lying, saying that he seen Ryan pointing the gun at him and that gave him the right to shoot and kill Ryan. And a lot of people just believe this is how the officer deceived and manipulated the situation and lied just to give him a kill, right?
Right.
And we have a situation where, you know, these officers can make a decision to shoot or to not shoot. And many people say, well, oh gee, why you say they make a decision? Because that's exactly what happens. Some of them choose to shoot and kill you and the other ones choose to not do nothing at all.
Watch it on AR-15 on the highway patrol.
That video was recorded by Donald Vincent Di Macurio Tuesday afternoon. It shows a CHP traffic stop near Mountain Gate in Shasta County. Now, you see the man in the white shirt outside of his vehicle. The CHP said he pointed an AR-15-style weapon at the officer. Then the officer puts his car in reverse to get some distance. Hours later, officers stopped the suspect on Oasis Road in Reading. You see him there lying on the pavement, being taken into custody. Here's what we've learned about that suspect. His name is Jeffrey Bembry. He's 39 years old from Lake Shastina. Yesterday, he was in court to be arraigned on several charges, including assault with a semi-automatic firearm on an officer and fleeing.
They had no problem taking him into custody, huh? He was armed with a, with a, with an assault rifle. He walked up on the officer in the car with that bitch. I done, I done seen, I done seen the police be quick to bust that bitch outside the car, through the window, without letting the window down, through the windshield. And he's just putting that bitch in reverse.
From an officer while driving recklessly. He'll be back in court May 20th to enter a plea.
Now, here's a perfect example. Here's a clip, a viral clip that, you know, is going around. Now, keep in mind, the officer there in Cincinnati, Ohio, who shot Ryan saying that, you know, he had to do that because Ryan was pointing the gun at him. Well, this white man got out of his vehicle, pointed his assault rifle directly at the police officer. And guess what? He didn't get killed at all. We could clearly see this man threatening the officer. The officer retreated, let the man get back in the vehicle. Two miles down the road, they apprehended.
Yeah, man, you know how that shit go. Anyway, that's it for this shit, man. It's just rough life out here for the black man. Hey, man, if you a black man, hold your head up, bro. The whole world against you, nigga. Only thing to remember is all this shit temporary, you know what I'm saying? Once we leave this bitch, we all equal. Know what I'm saying? There's nothing else to worry about. Just try to beat the game, my nigga. Don't let this shit get you down too much, man. Try to beat the game, my boy. You got to try to beat the game. This shit is just a game. All the bullshit you go through is just temporary. Nigga, keep going and beat the motherfucking game. And hustle on a mission every day. Home Inc. TV. You feel me? Create a positive impact today or later. You feel me? Fuck them haters, man. Get your motherfucking paper straight like that. And never forget, this is a real nigga reaction, R and R moment. Straight like that. Real niggas do what they want to do. Bitch niggas do what they can. Hoe ass niggas gonna talk about it. And fuck niggas gonna hate regardless. I promise you that.